Do you think everybody please rise? To the flag of the United States of America and choose a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in dedication to the lives lost on September 11th, 2001. Thank you. First thing on your agenda tonight is approval of minutes for the city council meeting, August 28th, 2023. Council's wishes?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion on floor, properly second to approve the city council meeting minutes, August 28th, 2023. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akaba.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Yes. Work session meeting minutes, September 7th, 2023. Council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on floor, properly second to approve the work session meeting minutes. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion.
Bernardo.
Stay.
Akaba.
Stay.
Reese.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes. Registry of invoices as presented. Council's wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on floor, properly second to approve registry of invoices as presented. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akaba.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Public comments.
Mark Sullivan, Sandy Township. I would like council to revisit their decision to sell the Scribner Avenue parking lot, municipal parking lot. I'm pretty sure in a new consolidated government, we're thinking about keeping this as our municipal building. With increases in staff, I think parking might be a consideration where that parking lot would be usable to the new city.
I don't know the council's made a decision on it yet.
Well, I think it's out for bid, isn't it?
We've been discussing it.
Okay. Well, that's before it would be sold. That's what I'm suggesting, that we rethink that maybe those parking spaces could be used by the newly consolidated city.
And we have made a decision on it yet, so when it comes up again, we'll discuss it certainly.
Okay.
Well, I have a question, Mr. Sullivan. How many people, extra people, do you think that are going to be here?
Well, I think they're talking about having the police department working out of this building, so that might only be a handful. But I know we're talking about taking the staff from the Sandy Township in this building, consolidating with the staff here. So even if it's only 10 or 12 spots. And then you have council meetings. I know a lot of the public here this evening, I've seen block from across the street. I just don't want to see us short ourselves in parking in the future.
The only reason we were looking into is we were approached by a local business. I mean, and we can't just sell it to them. So we discussed putting off of minutes. I don't even know if we got any bids yet. Mr. Riss, you not here at the city?
Yeah. I thought he did something with it, but I don't know if he's heard back from anybody.
Oh, yeah, I haven't seen anything come back.
It's just out for bid. We're still getting them back in right now. We haven't received any. That's a phone brother's call.
And we can refuse all, you know, turn all those down if we want to.
I didn't know if that was anything you gave consideration to, that we might need additional spaces, but that's the only reason I bring that up.
Because we just had a parking survey done, and that was part of the parking survey that the downtown group gave us back of using those parking places.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, we haven't made any decisions yet, so, again, it'll be on the agenda, so, I mean, you're free to speak then, and good, thank you. Everybody else? Yes?
Jennifer Jackson. I was just actually out puttering around in town, and I maintenance the Pocket Parks. And I'm just wondering if there's something that could be done to maybe deter the hanging out in there and the trash and some of the issues that we're having, because I'm the one that cleans it up. And I want to say a thank you to Scott, because I see Scott's back here. And I message Scott Farrell all the time and say, there's six grocery carts at this pocket park. There's grocery, and he picks them up. So I want to give a shout out to Scott, because I see he's behind me. But I just didn't know if there's anything that could be done to
Yeah, I think we could have the police look more, keep an eye on them.
Signage, I just
Yeah. The shopping cart issue is a dilemma we all have. We've tried, unfortunately.
I mean, I think the purpose of the Pocket Park, Pocket Park is for people to use them.
Yeah, but like I'm picking up like Frank's Pizza food and literally garbage. And it's nice, granted, but I know somebody just had an instance there last week with somebody saying something, and it's just, I love it that I hang out. I mean, it's beautiful, but I just don't want to see people taking advantage of it and that it getting trashed.
Have you talked with the owner of the property?
It's the city.
No, that's owned by Lori Lewis.
No, no, the Pocket Parks are both under the city from what the downtown told me.
No. No, Lori, Joe. You know, we're down by Frank's Pizza. That was never, to my knowledge, that was never turned over to the city. We've been doing work there, we've been helping.
Yeah, I was gonna look at my register, but I recall it not being ours when it was built, and I don't know if it was ever turned over or not.
To my knowledge, Zach's saying no. That's why I ask about Lori Lewis, because putting up signs, it's an ownership responsibility. And Jen, a lot of people think like yourself, that we own that pocket park, but the people of the city have been going in there, but when it comes to signage and everything, you know Lori.
Yeah.
Maybe you want to have a little conversation with her about it.
Okay. I know even the one next to Sytish is that city.
That is, I guess.
That city, yeah.
We can't take a look at it, I mean.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was anything maintenance-wise or anything that could be done. Would the city want to take over that pocket park or no? Is that a possibility?
You mean Lori Lewis's?
Yes.
I really have no problem with it if they wanted to dedicate it to us.
Yeah.
I don't know the legality of it, Ms. Cherry.
If someone wants to donate it to you, you obviously lose, I don't know that you get a lot of tax dollars for it, so I think it matters that way.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Mecklen.
Debbie Mecklen, DuBois. I was actually, I had an incident at the pocket park last Thursday. About quarter after six, I was getting out of my car to go into Frank's Pizza. And there were three people in the pocket park. And they yelled over to me and were wanting to engage with me. I didn't really feel it was necessary for me to. But then when I didn't, they agitated them. And the one gentleman got up. And I took it to be an aggressive action. And he called me a name. And with that, I said, sorry, I didn't engage you earlier. I was preoccupied with my phone. And they took a couple steps towards me, but I was other than Frank's. And then when I came out, I just, I don't normally park where I did that night. And I had to walk past the pocket park. And normally I park across the street, because I'm an older woman alone. And anyway, it's something to watch.
Okay. What time did you say you were there?
Quarter after six.
Okay, thank you. Chief, could you make the officers aware of that?
Absolutely.
And keep an eye on it.
Yeah, please, next time, don't hesitate to call. Any, anything like that makes you more comfortable, just come check it out. You know, either you're kind of iffy, make the call. Please let us come down.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, with that, the moment we've all been waiting for. We asked Mr. Kane to be here tonight. He is our forest management supervisor. He's been doing it for the city of DuBois for well over 20
Forty years.
Forty years. With a lot of things, again, in the media, social media, about, you know, we're abusing the watershed and doing what we shouldn't be doing. I've met with Mr. Kane thousands of times about it, walked the property with him. Well, that's a lie. I rode the four-wheeler, or you won. But he's here to answer any questions and give you a little bit of knowledge about the watershed and what he's been doing and what the city's been doing in the past forty years.
I'm going to ask, is Mr. Jones here?
No, I just hope he's going to be here.
I just hate, he had a lot of questions.
Well, I'm not sure where to stand or who to address, so I'm going to stand over here and address everybody if that works. First of all, no one goes into forestry to be a public speaker, so I'm going to apologize for my speaking abilities upfront, okay? But for the past forty years, we've been involved with the city of DuBois managing the resource. And one of the things that we've worked with, and it's unusual for me to be at council, other than official actions, but we work with the watershed committee. For decades, we worked with Mr. John Dugan, who is a great leader of the watershed committee, and now with Scott Farrell, who's the leader of the watershed committee. And that committee does a phenomenal job of learning about what forestry is. And forestry is a very complex science that is against conventional wisdom. We would think that trees grow, the big ones would be the ones you want to cut, and the little ones will grow up. That's not true. It's kind of like somebody, Danny DeVito, standing next to me. I don't care what you feed him, how many of those subs he's going to eat on TV? He's not going to be six foot four. And that's the way trees are too. In the eighties, we had a challenge on the DuBois watershed in the fact that we had a very high deer population. And that deer population changed the understory vegetation. That what happened was we had hay-scented fern, striped maple, and beech that are not sustainable. And over the course of forty years, we were able to use forest practices. And the city supported us in calling us to the carpet and proving that those tactics work. We have taken those tactics, you see it in the paper, where Bobby distributes deer management assistance program tags for the city watershed. That is to help keep the deer population in balance, so it does, the deer don't eat themselves out of house and home, and we can regenerate that forest. So that forty-year period of different practices has brought us to a point where we're able to get natural regeneration on the forest floor. Now, I sit here and say this briefly, but over that forty years, we built partnerships with the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources that owns the land south of the watershed. We've built relationships with the Pennsylvania Game Commission, which owns the land north of the watershed. The best example I can give of that, in 1991, when there was a critter called the Gypsy Moth. It was defoliating the landscape. The city of DuBois had to go on their own and bid off a spray program. That spray program cost thirty percent more than what it costs to spray public land, because we were small. This past year, the same insect now called the Spongey Moth, because of political correctness. We were able to partner with the Pennsylvania Game Commission and save the city over $40,000, because the Game Commission allowed us to piggyback on their lowest competitive bid of 120,000-acre program that DuBois was 4,000 acres. Those are the partnerships that bring us to today. So those partnerships, the fact that we're able to get forest regeneration, we're at a very small snapshot in time. Because we know the past forty years, we couldn't regenerate our forests. But we also know that John DuBois himself, when he had a sawmill here in DuBois in the 1880s and early 1900s, is when that watershed was originally clear cut. And that, that's when that forest started. Now we have a mature forest. Over fifty percent of the forest is in medium to large sawtimber size class. We should have balanced age classes. Where sapling, whole timber, small sawtimber, medium and large sawtimber are equally balanced. We're terribly out of balance. The whole state of Pennsylvania is terribly out of balance. So through partnerships with the Game Commission and DCNR, you can go out and walk for miles. And unless you recognize the yellow paint on the city boundaries, which we had surveyed in 2005 for the first time, and have been maintained ever since. Unless you see that yellow paint, you wouldn't recognize the civil culture. Because what's happening on DCNR land, on game lands, on the city of DuBois, is a landscape management approach of cooperation, collaboration, to keep the flora, the fauna, and the quality of water, which is number one to us, in as good a condition as it can be. Now, with that said, we have, we have to do civil cultural practices. We've done thinnings, as many as four thinnings in the same stand, which was unheard of. But that was the concept we got from the Northeast Forest Experiment Station with the lead scientist, Dave Marquess. We had him out there, and he said, guys, you can't regenerate, you got to keep thinning. So we thinned it to the point now that it's completely mature. Hundred and thirty years is thirty years beyond, by, beyond market maturity and approaching biological maturity, where the forest will start falling apart if we don't manage it aggressively. So we have to start a new forest. So through a series of those thinnings, then shelterwood cuts, where we put sunlight on the forest floor to get that regeneration started, and manipulate that vegetation that's on the forest floor to, you know, reduce the beech, the striped maple and the fern, so that the oak, maple, cherry can come up. But not do it to the point where the birch overtakes it, because we want diversity. And if we don't do it right, we'll get too much of one species. So we have the situation on, and if you recall when you accepted the bid in April, I said, we might get backlash at this, because this is the first time we've done a regeneration cut that's visible. And we did it on purpose. We have the short way, Interstate 80 to the north. We have Anderson Creek to the south. We have two oil well roads on East and West. And we confined that area and made it publicly visible, so that people could learn what sustainable forestry looks like. The best analogy I can give is, I'm gray-haired, many people in here have gray hair. We all know someone that had a joint replacement. And if you ever had a joint replacement, the week after surgery, you're asking yourself, why in the heck did I do this? Six months after joint replacement, you say, my God, why did I wait so long? But that's, that's what forest management is. It's, as the Pendop people say, a temporary inconvenience for a permanent improvement. A temporary unsightliness to start a new forest. I don't care, it's the birthing of an animal, or the birthing of a baby. That process, or the birthing of a forest, that process is not sightly. But what comes from it is great. And that's what's happening on the watershed. And you're going to have to see more of it, because this window may not be open for long. Because public pressure may cause the deer herd to go up. Or just natural succession will cause a deer herd to go up. The average hunter in Pennsylvania is 57 years old. They don't, we as hunters don't have the capacity to keep deer in balance with their habitat. So those type of things, we have to mitigate, manage for. And we collaborate, cooperate to do that. Now, my final statement is, as the mayor said, we've been out on the watershed. If anyone challenges, doesn't believe, wants to see for themselves. We are here, my son Kenny, myself, we have a staff of other foresters. We would love to take you out and teach you about forest management. Ron, Ron learned a lot about it back in 2000, 2001, when we worked together. It is a complicated science that goes against conventional wisdom. But it is a sound science, started right here in Pennsylvania by Gifford Pincho and John Rutherford. And those people are, they are the leaders of forestry in Pennsylvania. We are here in Pennsylvania in Penns Woods. Pennsylvania in itself, if it was a country on its own, would only be second to the United States of American hardwood production. That's how good our forests are. That's how well they're made. Questions? You can see the nerve in my voice, it's starting to crack. Welcome, questions?
Ken, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and please forgive me, because I'm going to have, need help with the terminology. There is or was a program to help reduce the carbon footprint. A carbon credit, you know where?
Carbon credits, yes.
Okay. So do you know if Pennsylvania, anywhere in Pennsylvania, that any areas are participating in this swap-off?
There are several carbon, carbon sequestration programs. We actually participated in one about three or four years ago, where you would sign up and procrastinate a timber sale, and they would give you some financial compensation for that. The, the challenge we have, and I've worked with the Penn State Department of Ecosystem Science and Management and the Pennsylvania Forest Products Association, there's many of us that believe that the way they calculate the carbon sequestration in Pennsylvania is not efficient enough for the Pennsylvania forest. They, in that calculation, the reimbursement for carbon only gives about a seven-and-a-half-year return on the carbon that is sequestered in a product. Well, Pennsylvania hardwoods are high quality. When someone makes something out of that Pennsylvania hardwood, it lasts a lot longer than seven-and-a-half years. If you look at the filing cabinets in my office, the paper is where, has been around a lot more than seven-and-a-half years. So we have not bought into the carbon sequestration game yet, because there are many people that are using that carbon sequestration game as a way of preserving forests and letting them get too old and the, and then not be necessarily efficient or effective. The best example I can give of that is, if you ever looked at a colored infrared photograph of a forest. A young vibrant forest is bright red, consuming carbon, creating oxygen through photosynthesis. A maturing forest has a dollar shade of red with little tints of gray, because as that forest falls apart, it's decomposing, creating carbon, and it's not generating as much photosynthesis and consuming as much carbon or creating as much oxygen. So we are holding off, because those, those, those carbon deals are pretty long-term. And we're waiting for a better deal that's more accurate to what it truly is before we buy it.
Is there negotiation? To your knowledge, you can negotiate?
You can negotiate. Like I said, we signed up for some. And it was, it was, it was a good deal for our clients that did it. But that's
Ken, if you would, there are a lot of people probably wondering, why we're talking about carbon. Do you want to give the basis of this program and how it's exchanged with companies, so people understand?
Yeah. There's some big companies that are involved in carbon exchange. And that is, if you're an industrial company, you tend to have some type of energy consumption. The use of fossil fuels creates carbon dioxide in the air. Forests consume carbon dioxide through photosynthesis, turns it into oxygen. So some of these companies, because they're so extremely profitable, are buying carbon credits in exchange for the carbon they produce through their industrial processes. Over, very simple answer to what you asked me to explain. The big, the big players of that really are Microsoft, because they're extremely profitable. Jeff Bezos and Amazon is doing, because of the number of vehicles they have on the road and, and because they're extremely profitable. It, it's, it's conscience money. It's not a lot different than Carnegie funding half your library 100 years ago. Just a different need. Are there any questions I can answer? I'd be glad to do it. Scott, did I miss anything?
No, covered it well.
Okay, yes, sir.
Are you with a, do you have your own company, or are you with a government organization?
I have an interesting history. I, I worked for a guy by the name of Keith Horn for 30 years. A decade ago, I bought the company, and three months ago, he sold it to him.
Congratulations. Thank you.
What's the name of your company? Yeah, what's the name of your company?
Generations Forester.
When Ken bought
And the reason for that is, foresters go through generations. Landowners go through generations. And as I just explained, forests go through succession, which is the generations. Thus the name Generations.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you very much. Okay, the next thing on our agenda tonight is the Constitution Week proclamation, council's wishes. I'll read this once you guys approve it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion on floor, properly second to approve proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17th to 23rd, 2023. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akaba.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Walsh.
And the proclamation reads as such, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principle of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2023, marks the 234th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to afford, to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas the public law in 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th to the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council, by virtue of the authority vested in them as the mayor and city council of the city of DuBois, hereby proclaim the week of 17, September 17th to 23rd as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution, heading with 1787 by vigilance protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties and witness thereof. Okay, we had some planning commission recommendations that the, I need council's approval to send them to Ms. Cherry for the solicitor to prepare some ordinances. The first one, we'll do them individually. Planning recommendation, planning commission's recommendation on skill games was again to turn this over to Ms. Cherry for a city ordinance. Council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on floor, properly second to send the skill games to Ms. Cherry for the preparation of an ordinance. Any questions on the motion?
Yeah, can I add some details?
The, the skill games ordinances, right now we have ordinances. Zach, you want to go ahead and
Mechanical device licensing, so playing games, anything coin-operated, stuff like that. The skills machines keep popping up, and there's getting more and more and more of them. A lot of municipalities throughout Pennsylvania have broken it down a little bit more. Skills machines are, pay a higher fee to have them in their municipalities as compared to, say, just a video game or whatnot. And our ordinance has been outdated. It hasn't been updated for a lot of years. So with the more and more skills machines coming, we thought it was time to update everything, get it more modernized, and get the fees more regulated on that. So that's what the planning commission
Was there fees suggested?
Yes, if I, if I might?
Yeah.
We're not reinventing the wheel here. We looked at, and thanks to Mr. Lawhead, city of Johnstown has an ordinance that does in fact do this. And they had quite a bit of help. It's an excellent ordinance. And I think because they were coming out of bankruptcy, and so they had professional, they had professional consultants do this. But to get to the bottom of it, the licensing fee that is used by Johnstown, and I think planning proposed this as well for jukebox, an annual fee established at $100 per machine. And thereafter, updated by the city's schedule of fees by a resolution. My recommendation, and I think we talked about this at planning as well, is we need an ordinance to set the base. And then council, if they don't like those fees, can change it by resolution. But I think you need an ordinance that really sets it out, because we get these questions all the time. Then two would be pool table. An annual fee established at $75 per table, thereafter updated in the city's schedule of fees by a resolution of the city council of the city of DuBois. Then three, we talk about video skill or mechanical amusement device. Number one, a non-paying device would have an annual fee established at $100 and thereafter updated in the city's and thereafter updated in the city's schedule of fees by resolution of city council. And then number two, the gambling and skill devices, some of which are regulated by PLCB, some of which because they're deemed as skillser are not. Uh, annual fee there would be established at $350. Thereafter also changed by, uh, a, a resolution. And we'll, we'll have that included in the ordinance. I've read it over when we, we, we talked about it and, and really I, I, I think planning was very satisfied. That's why they're sending it to you. Obviously, once it's drafted, you're gonna be able to critique it and put in or take out anything you, you want. But at least you'll have a basis from which to work.
My first ordinance.
Well, there you go.
Okay, any other question on the motion?
No.
Vote on the motion.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akapah.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes. Uh, number two is the rental properties, uh, recommendation for planning. Again, Ms. Cherry, you wanna talk about that?
Yes, sir. Back in, uh, 2015, and this was also, if I remember correctly, uh, Mr. Lawhead, we, uh, looked at, uh, ordinances for, um, residential rentals from other municipalities. And, and again, we, we took the very best and brought it into, uh, an ordinance that was council, that was presented to council as council bill number 1908. And it, uh, passed that first reading on October 22nd, 2015. Uh, but it met with great opposition by landlords. And so it was, uh, ultimately voted down, uh, on February 4th of 2016. Uh, we think there are some real issues that we have because we've had fires, we don't know, the firemen do not know who's on what floor, how many people. We're not looking for the identity of these individuals, but numbers. Uh, and there are, um, individuals who are, uh, disabled and are not on first floors. And, you know, the fire department needs to, needs to have an awareness of whether we have somebody with special needs that is up on a second or, or third floor. Um, and there were, um, again, um, need for a, um, registration because we have out of, uh, not just, not landlords that are not just not in the community, but they're actually out of state. And, and so there's documentation that we need and, and we don't have, uh, we don't have that. We don't have ownership. And I've been at court with Mr. Lawhead before because we do have these situations where we have, uh, instances of blight and we're having difficulty with absentee landlords. And I'm not talking about they live in Brookville, they live out of state and we've not been able to correct the problem. But I, I, I think planning's position was, uh, it's, the situation has now become such that it's time to take a second look at it. Uh, that doesn't mean that council will not make changes, but at least it's, or will ultimately pass it. But at least these problems that we're, we have been having will again, uh, be in a position to be reconsidered by council. And you can make a determination if now is the time to adopt this ordinance.
Tony, may I add something?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Jen, you and I have talked about this multiple times and this is just the backbones of the ordinance. But the details of what goes on that registration form, this is where I look at you as a property owner and somebody very much concerned about blight in our community and the state of, of, of what's happened. So, um, I know you're real busy, but I want you to know that this is not in the ordinance. This is a separate registration form that's gonna need some work. And I have some samples, but not to the details of what we need, if you'd like to have them.
Is there, I don't know, I mean, I'm a landlord. There's not a landlord association in DuBois, correct?
No, it's not.
You are correct.
I don't think it's active anymore.
It, it's not a group, but they came and they protested and, and that's what happened. And they formed their own group and they reviewed it and they were not pleased with it. And so council didn't proceed with it. But, you know, that was, it was a while ago.
May I be bold enough to say, Jen, again, you and I've had these conversations. In the form, it didn't ask things like, anything about people or income or anything like this. But do you know the types of people who stormed here? They weren't our good property owners like you are. And so that's why, I mean, it's a very delicate situation without a doubt. But, uh, I'm glad you're willing to work on it though because we want landlords to see it as a safety issue. This is all about safety. We don't wanna know how much your rent is. We don't wanna know, you know, who, who, it's not a financial statement. It's something that can be used not just to sit in the codes office, but to be used by the, you know, EMS and the fire department.
So, is this, can I ask a question? Is this something then that also you brought up the blight? And I know it goes to the magistrate, that there could be more of a push to fight? Cause I mean, I go around and see the different properties and I know Zach has his hands full, that there's more of a fine or something that if you're not maintaining these properties as a rental, you know, cause like a lot of them do live out of the area, that there's a hefty or fine to deter, um, what is happening?
Well...
Excuse me, I wanna make the point that, uh, there was, there were responsible landlords who came and approached me and came even to the meeting and supported the ordinance.
Wasn't it enough? But, your response is Pennsylvania has a blight statute. And, um, one of the things we have talked about is that, um, we might be more effective if we went after landlords rather than tenants because that we have absentee landlords who are not aware of the conditions of their properties here. And, and that's what I think, uh, this ordinance might be able to promote, that we could, we could start having a little more control. Because we have been in court and it really doesn't do any good to go after a tenant. I don't think they can afford the fine. I, but I think a landlord could put pressure on the, you know, we have properties where people are hoarders, they have things all the way up to the ceiling. And we've had cases, there are small children in these buildings. They are, they are, they are being reared in this environment and it's just not healthy.
Can I just ask one last question? The three blighted properties that you're tearing down, were all three landlord? Rental?
Yes, yes.
They were all, okay.
Yeah, no, uh, two of them are deceased. Nobody took over in the heir, in the succession. And then the third one, guy moved out of state and never looked back.
Okay, council's wishes on the...
Eddie, can I ask a question? Does the ordinance address student housing?
I beg your pardon, ma'am.
Does the ordinance address student housing?
It, it does not. And there was, there was, um, discussion about that. And, uh, one of the, um, areas of the discussion is, do we want to segregate student housing? Uh, do we want to, you know, because the definition of family has really changed. And, and we can no longer use that in, in the ordinance or say we're only going to have single families, those kinds of things. Um, I, I don't see that there is a student housing there, but I think we can address it in this ordinance. And, and maybe then at least you open the topic for discussion. You might like it, you might not like it, but you can start talking about it.
Will that apply to the housing authority as well?
Yeah, as in section eight.
Section eight?
Well, I mean, even the high rises, as Ms. Bernardo talked about hoarders, I mean, from the fire department side, we've gone into a lot of housing authority properties with conditions like you've described.
You mean inside the, inside the apartments?
Inside the apartments.
Wouldn't you think the apartment managers would have some oversight on that or?
I'm, I'm just saying that...
HUD has requirements. They do yearly inspections.
They do. And they preempt us.
Cause it's a federal program.
It's federal. They, they would preempt, preempt the regulations that we do. But, but I, I know that's a serious problem. Especially when you have people who might be elderly or disabled. They need special, special care.
Kids.
Okay, council, council's wishes. I'm turning this over to Ms. Cherry.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have motion on floor, property second to turn the rental properties ordinance over to Ms. Cherry for formation. Any questions on the motion?
Yeah, I have one real quick one. So, there's gonna be a registration, so you'll have to register, register your rentals because there's going to be an inspection. Is that part of the ordinance?
No, it is not.
Okay, that'll be a second ordinance if we decide?
That would be something, that's an iffy thing.
So, that's a little different than the one in 15.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, when you're trying to go in there into somebody's home, I think that's a different situation. I think we deal only with the exterior.
Once it's drafted, we could all take a look at it and discuss it.
And we, and we might add something like, uh, when a tenant moves out. But that's, that gets pretty iffy.
Okay, we'll vote on the motion.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akapah.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes. And finally, Ms. Cherry, junk yards.
The, the third one, we, the city has an ordinance entitled Junk Yards. It's chapter 248 of the Code of Ordinances. But, uh, where we think it is lacking is in the, um, short shrift it gives to motor vehicles. It is, motor vehicles are, uh, junk vehicles are defined, or they are listed as junk. But we have some situations in this community where auto parts, uh, junk cars, um, vehicles that cannot possibly run are stacked up on the side and they are not, uh, covered by, uh, appropriate fencing. Uh, and I, I think one of the issues that was brought up was the McCracken Run Road is a beautiful, beautiful road. Uh, and we have a, a problem there that we think our ordinance does not quite, uh, address. And so it was the, the direction from planning, uh, to me was that we really need to fix this. And then my response is, well, council needs to direct me to draft something so that everyone can take a look at it.
Okay, council's wishes on the third recommendation from planning about junk yards.
I'll make that motion. Second that motion.
Okay, motion on floor, property second again to turn this over to our solicitor for the proper, uh, preparation of the, um, ordinance for junk yards. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akapah.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes. Number 10, the Comcast agreement. Um, as Mr. Nissody stated, uh, he wanted to just clarify that it's not an exclusive contract with Comcast. Um, the contract is basically used for Comcast to pay us for the use of our right of ways. Uh, the amount of the franchise fee is $29,529, roughly. Um, and that is a quarterly franchise fee. So, it's, yeah, it's $29,529,29. Yeah, so I might be wrong.
So, any other cable company can come in and...
They can come in and do it and then they'll, they'll have to sign a similar agreement to use our right of ways and, and so forth. So, um, I'm sorry? Does this, does this apply just to TV or does this apply to internet as well?
Just TV.
Just TV.
Just cable TV.
Okay, that's good. And, uh, does this get turned over to you as well, Ms. Cherry, to finalize this or we already, we're ready to go with this?
No, it's done.
Okay.
This was simply to reiterate what I had previously advised was in the contract.
Okay, good. Okay, number 11, dedication of the water line by Chestnut Avenue from 14th Street to Oklahoma Cemetery Road. Um, this is the Rusty Gates Apartments. Has constructed an eight-inch water line in their right of way, uh, for Chestnut Avenue. They have requested the City of DuBois accept the dedication of this water line. And again, um, Chris's recommendation is we accept it. Again, I think we have to turn that over to you and I'll lay council's wishes to do that.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay, we have motion on floor, property second to turn the dedication of the Rusty Gates Apartment, complex water line on Chestnut Avenue from 14th Street to Oklahoma Cemetery Road over to Ms. Cherry, um, for her proper paperwork. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akapah.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Number 12, of non-uniform pension. Patrick, you attend a meeting?
Uh, we had a, we had a meeting of the pension fund. We had it reviewed by the company that, that, this is the non-uniformed pension fund. Uh, that they reviewed it, talked about it. There was a decision made and it was unanimous that we moved from eight, that we moved to the projected, uh, annual rate anticipated at seven and a half percent and, uh, called smoothing, where they level it off over the years. We would like, the, the committee, the pension fund would like a, a blessing from, from the city to go ahead and make that change.
Patrick, would you refresh me, who's on the committee?
Oh, boy. I don't know everybody. Do you remember, can you say?
Uh, Koyd, Lars?
Yeah, who was all, who's on the committee?
Stroski, Edwards, Noah, Bailey.
And the mayor.
Yeah, yeah. And, so, like I said, they made a decision to move that. What that will do is pretty much increase the MMO that the city will owe, but it will put more money back into the, into the pension fund. Um, it's, at seven and a half, I think it was, was Dave 62% funded? If it was seven and a half, I think?
Yeah, and keep in mind, all that's projections.
Yeah, it's all kind of guesswork.
But, but reducing it from an anticipated rate return, eight to seven and a half, makes it less whimsical, you know, based on the market.
Right.
You wanna be more conservative. You wanna work your way to seven. Well, I think we all agree that going straight to seven was gonna be too big of a bite, so...
Right, yeah. We wanna do that and also we would like to form a committee, maybe three, three people, um, ad hoc committee of, you know, CPAs, financial advisors, you know, MBAs, people in business, people that work with pensions, so we can have some knowledge, so that board can have that knowledge. Um, I knew nothing about this pension and stuff. Luckily, I know somebody that, you know, of an angel advisor, that I took all this stuff to him and said, and explained this to me. You know, and that's the only reason I learned is, so we need some real expert help with that.
You and I talked about having somebody with that background.
Yes.
Permanently on the committee, but that would have to be changed.
That would require like votes and all this kinda stuff. We can do an advisory committee and just have it and then use them...
Well, don't you think we should try to, I'm just thinking we should make it, make it permanent as, as part of that committee to where you have that person on there so it doesn't...
It would be nice to have somebody on it.
In the future, it's already done. It's not just a, you know...
I, I think that's something we need to move towards.
Yeah.
And I don't know the procedure, but this will solve that, that problem right away if we make an advisory board. So, I'm asking council to support, um, the advisory board and moving from eight to seven, seven and a half percent anticipated rate on the pension. That'll shore up the pension. And I don't know if we need a motion or we just need a...
I have a question, a legal question. Tony, any comments or thoughts on the advisory boards? How that would, would work on this because it is a non-uniform pension plan?
This is, I'm, I'm just reading this now. Um, do we not, what, was all of this not negotiated with the help of professionals by the representatives of the non-uniformed?
Well, the anticipated rate of return doesn't have anything to do with the negotiation. That's sort of an internal metric that you guys use. What you would have negotiated would have been like the multiplier and the percentages that they get and nobody's talking about changing that, so...
No, no, I, I understand that, sir. My question is though, in order to have done this, we had the help of some CPAs and some representatives. My only question is, were those people, were those individuals involved in this meeting?
No.
Um, yeah, um, one was, we discussed it with one.
But they weren't at the physical meeting, was it?
They were not at the meeting, no.
Can we have some time to... Can we have some time to work, I mean, again, I'd like Chris to be here, too.
Yes, I, you surprised me with me talking about this.
Right, well...
Yeah.
I just threw you at the meeting, I couldn't...
Yes, I was.
But, so, let's, can we put this on the agenda for next meeting?
Yeah, not a problem at all with that.
I just have one question.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you know where I'm going. Okay. You said there was obviously a meeting of the pension committee. May I ask?
All right.
Does that pension committee include individuals who are representatives of the non-uniformed recipients, members of this pension?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's...
The only one that was, the only one that's on a committee that's not, well, is me. The rest of them are all city employees.
Yeah, they're either pensioners or paid into the pension, one of the other.
There's two, there's two retired people...
There's under seven people that need to be on it, I think that's right.
There's supposed to be two administrative employees, two union employees, two retired pensioners, and then a city council member, is what is supposed to be on the committee. When you say supposed to be, and is that in fact who makes up the committee? Yes. But right now, it is not a whole committee, because we can't find any retirees that want to do it.
The ones that were on it, so, we're trying to get replacements, I saw.
You got one, you pointed one.
We got one.
There was one, yeah.
Yeah, so as I said, I thought...
There was one, yeah.
Okay. So in addition to the pension committee, what you're looking for is an ad hoc committee, or to advise the pension committee?
Yes.
I see. I understand.
Okay, so we'll put that on the agenda for next time, next month, or next meeting, and we'll go from there. Okay, number 13, I'm going to read this one. I need a motion on the floor to accept the resignation of our beloved Ms. Bobby Schaefer.
Yeah, we all decided we weren't going to accept her.
Yeah, it's with a heavy heart, though, I've always done so many great things for several years, and a pleasure to work with, by all, you know, inside the city, outside the city, I know that from talking to other people that's called and done with Bobby, but, you know, move on to retirement and wish you well, what that means, and make a motion to accept the resignation of Bobby Schaefer.
I have a second on the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, property second, to accept the resignation of Bobby Schaefer. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on a motion.
Bernardo.
You know, Bobby, I want to say no.
We all do.
I want to say no, but I know how important this is to you with your family and the next journey in your life, so reluctantly, friend, I say yes.
Akambo.
Reluctantly, yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Absolutely not, no. I mean it, no. I'm not...
You have to vote yes, Eddie, because I had to.
Chief, anything, Dad, tonight?
No, sir.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
Daylene?
Good.
Good.
Grass still growing, huh?
A lot of rain.
Thank you.
Bobby Schaefer for the time and energy that she has given to our city, and she's a very genuine and kind-hearted person, and excited for what your future brings. Also, the other night, we had a tree fall across the street in the middle of the night, and at 2:30 in the morning, we had at least 20 firefighters out there chopping up a tree in the middle of the night, and then at 7:00 AM, we had Smokey and the city crew out there picking up what was left. By 7:30, I think the whole street was cleaned up, so, just like for the people we have in the city that will get up in the middle of the night and first thing in the morning get everything back to the way it should be. Got a lot of great people.
Yeah. Mr. Bernardo.
Yes, I just want to say that this year's league conference is probably most, one of the most pivotal that I've attended in years. So what I'm going to do is each of these resolutions, I'm going to copy and give you the appropriate department heads for comment before I go to the committee, but I'm really excited, because there's things like support for a community solar program in Pennsylvania. Okay, chief, are you ready?
Yes.
Speed timing technology, AKA radar lidar, can you believe it, we're back at it again. Senior citizens, there is going to be, in addition to the Homestead-Farmstead exclusion that was authorized in 1998, so that's money in our senior pockets. No, oh, this is interesting. Notice of condemnation prior to county sales. The real estate tax sale law, this is an amendment to the real estate tax law, sales tax, to include the condemnation status in the property's description to ensure greater transparency for potential tax sale bidders. As we've seen, Commissioner, and you've seen it yourself, people go in and buy these and all at once, it's just a building beyond repair, you know, so that's one of them. For the fire department, increasing the penalty for driving over a fire hose, that's no funny stuff either. And post-traumatic stress injury for first responders policy update, and stormwater management policy. So again, I will copy each of these and ask each of you to make comment, department head-wise. That's okay with everybody? And on a personal note, if I may say, the morning that we were in court, I want to thank the individuals who came up to me and expressed condolences, because prior to going to court, my four-legged furry friend died. And so as I sat up in the holding area and someone asked how my four-year-old in fur was, it just broke my heart. So thank you for those condolences that other people who love animals shared with me, I appreciate it. That's it, thank you.
James.
Hey, and did I have a question?
Can we, hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Ms. Cherry. I don't have anything other than to express my profound appreciation to Ms. Schaefer. Ms. Schaefer, it was a privilege to work with you all these years. You have an encyclopedic knowledge of all documents within this city, and it's always been really so comforting to be able to, you know, talk about things that I thought I remembered and to run it by you. Really, it's been a privilege to work with you.
Yes.
I know, I probably have the answer, the answer will come from, I was thinking of retaining our secretary for the planning commission. Possible? Bobby?
She can't, she got to work at her new job, so...
I know, I know, I had to ask.
Okay. Bobby, I don't know what to say, you know, it's been a hell of a 14-year run with me, and I'm sorry about the last year, you went through hell. You're always the first person that got yelled at when they came through the door, you took it with grace, and you've been accused of doing a lot of stuff that you never did, I appreciate your dignity. You know, they say everybody's replaced, well, I just don't know about this one. You know, you replaced another person, Fran Lyles, who left us on the same thing, you know, to retire, and we don't like that either, but, thank you, from the bottom of my heart. With that, I'll ask council for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Motion on floor, property second, to adjourn tonight's meeting. Any questions? We'll vote.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akambo.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Walsh.